Alleged to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. I'll move on to public participation. First, we have the public comment portion, which is the two-minute opportunity. Any member of the public that's here today can address the board on any topic. If you're on the agenda elsewhere, you don't need to speak now, but you can. All right, hearing none. Move on to item B for public comment, is the MEDC semi-annual update. And I'll invite Shar and Dr. Schlepp up to the podium.
Good evening, President Rowley and all the trustees. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. Obviously, hopefully, we can all take a big breath after our first day of office of somebody else, and we can sort of relax and breathe and move on. The first hundred days are upon us. We'll see what happens. We're here tonight, obviously, to express our ability to express what we've done this past year and to thank the trustees for all your continued support. As you all know, the EDC formed back in 2013, or '23. '24 was our first officially starting with us, so we're now going into our 13th year. During that time, the EDC has been heavily supported and truly appreciate all the efforts put forth by the Village of Montgomery in supporting this organization. We've had an excellent year this past year. We have opportunities moving forward for next year. We are working hard on our membership, also to increase some of our dollar amounts from our current members. We recently finished up our budget for the year, and it looks like we have a solid budget for the upcoming 2017 calendar year. We've also had an election of officers. The officers will be myself again for the seventh year as the chairman of the EDC, as well as other appointed officials who will be working with me. Hopefully, with the position that I can work with and have somebody in place for possibly next year. The elements, obviously, have been done with the EDC. I don't think we have to go into a lot of detail, more than just, again, Shar was going to be presenting to you what we've accomplished. And again, I wanted to thank all of you for our continued support and for being a part of this organization, for being there, for also working with me, and obviously, talking with me on a regular basis. A lot of you, I appreciate all the input and all the fact that I can reach out to you, and also the fact we have a very good, obviously, ongoing discussion and conversations. And I truly appreciate the fact that I have that ability to work with all of you. It means a lot to me. With that, I will then turn over to Sharlene, present to you our fiscal of last year and this year.
Could you hear okay? Because he sounded, sounded like...
Is the green light on?
It's, yeah.
Okay.
It's on. Doc also forgot to mention that he's been in Montgomery 31 years.
For the record, that was a standing ovation, in case anybody's wondering.
I think he said he was 29, so... Anyway, I'm here to, again, thank all of you as well, because the MEDC has had a great year, and we appreciate all that you've done for us and all that you've been able to help us do. What I wanted to do was kind of go over our primary goals, and then I'll go into some of the things that have been accomplished this year, touch on some of the new developments, some of the redevelopment, and some of the happenings in the community. So first of all and foremost is public relations and marketing. It's important that we get the word out who Montgomery is, what we do, and how good we are to businesses. Also, we care about the economic impact of the village, the investment and the jobs in the community. That's huge for us. And then communication and information. We try to work with businesses and help them understand the things that we can and move So in my presentation and as I recap the year, I'll talk about events that we've done, some new things that happened this year. Or when I say this year, I really mean 2016. And some of those include, one was the Planning Commission. In 2016, we were asked to make a presentation to the Planning Commission and educate them on the things that we do. That was pretty exciting, because they asked a lot of questions. They also then invited me back, although I'm at all the meetings anyway, but they also invited me back to participate in the Land Use Plan and the Future Plan, which also really helped, because from somebody who's marketing the community, it's important that maybe sometimes you know that if you put a burden on the staff, it might not be realistic. So those were some of the things that I brought up during the Plan Commission, and they were very grateful. And it was very nice to be able to have that say-so. And then, the profession itself, the first time ever, in, I believe, 40 years, there was recognition for the economic development field. So the village passed proclamation, and they made an Economic Development Month, where the IEDC then honored different EDC corporations and talked about the things that they do and how important they are to communities. And then, Wabonzi also did a special recognition to all the EDC partners to talk about the things that the EDCs do and how they help the college grow. So advertising. How does the MEDC market Montgomery? We primarily work with that one particular ad, where we focus on the strengths in Montgomery. We work with magazines, directories. We work with testimonies, also have events or meetings, and then work with the press as well as social media. These are the primary publications that we use a lot of, because here, these are businesses that are looking for change in scenery. The Manufacturers is important to us as we try to grow our manufacturing base. Business Expansion Journal, we've had several articles. And then, the Northern Illinois Real Estate Magazine, they recently did a spread for me for complimentary on the Sugar Dome. And then, also, the Shopping Center, we use for commercial and retail. Now, our primary marketing dollars did focus last year on the redesign of the website. That was huge, because site selectors and brokers use websites to seek out communities, and so that was a huge undertaking for us. It hadn't been looked at in over 10 years, so we made it user-friendly, mobile-friendly. We wanted it to be easy to navigate, easy to find, informative, have an interface with a calendar, have social media links, and then also the ability to change something immediately. So on informative breakfast meetings, this one was last year in March. It was on the Affordable Care Act, and also fraud. This March, we're going to have one also with the First National Bank, and they're going to do the Many Faces of Fraud, as well as some information on SBA lending, because there's been a lot of changes in some of the financing rules and regulations. One of the things I want to mention with the meetings, and we hope to have three more after this one, it's also about the interaction between the businesses and the people getting to know one another. We want our businesses to support the businesses in the community and know that perhaps Lacon can make a widget, or a die, or whatever it might be. That's really what we do in our activities. We try to get people to meet each other and get to know each other where they feel comfortable, calling them on the phone or asking them for The bus tour, we've been doing for over five years. Sometimes, we focus on commercial, industrial. Last year, I think I covered four buildings, and then we also covered a lot of land. And that is a joint venture with Community Development Department. It's something that the village has always helped me with. We work with the maps together, the locations, and I set up the appointments, and then they're usually better at navigation than me, so... It starts with exposure. I think that's important. Some other highlights, again, the golf outing, that's our only fundraiser of the year. Usually, we bring in about $8,000 or $9,000. And the Holiday Appreciation Party was a great success again this year. We invited several of our new companies, and a lot of people got to meet one another. Some of the outgoing activities that the MEDC does, it's what I call an outreach, is the Retail Deal-Making Show that is in October at Navy Pier. Rich and I usually do that event together, and that's where we get to sit down with different businesses and see if they're looking to expand in the region or not. The Retail Connection was a different setup. It was in Rosemont, but we were given a large book, and each broker talked about what businesses are looking to come into the Chicago region and what they're looking Partnerships are also very important to the MEDC. Nobody can do anything alone. We work with the college a lot. Wabonzi's done. They do three job fairs a year. We try to get our companies, our local companies, in there. They make it very reasonable. We also work very closely with Kendall County, and this year, I even had several meetings with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. On the bottom right was the forecast, the economic forecast, and I was able to share those slides with everyone in one of our newsletters. Now, this is something new that occurred last year. It really was a lot of fun. Everybody talked about it. The Rotary took a contest hole. They gave away prizes, and hopefully, they also got new Rotary members. I'm not sure, but hopefully, they did. And there's a presentation. Teresa had presented the MEDC with a $200 check for what was raised during that event. This is probably one of my favorite slides. I was able to coordinate a meeting, and within 24 hours, I received a text with that airplane on it and said, "The limo is ready." So that was kind of exciting. And what's even more exciting is this is where they are today. And this, I want to say, really is all of the work of everyone in this room, because without the staff, without Public Works, without the Planning Commission, without the village, this property was annexed, rezoned, and started construction within six months. I think you should give yourself a round of applause. It also says a lot for the village, and it's carrying a lot of weight. Again, this is the never-ending cycle that starts with advertising and everyone working together. I put the village and the MEDC in the circle. It just talks about how we go from, you know, one entity to the other and the whole process. These are some facade improvements that were done by two of our executive board members or our executive members. I thought it was nice to see performance painted there, whole building, and gave it a whole different look. And as you can see, Butterball did a nice facade improvement as well. Now, new investment is always nice. I don't really know what the numbers are today, but when we started, this project was about $43 million. Again, this was another project that took the entire village and all of staff, and Pete Waller's played a big role in this one, as well as some developers and investors who helped make this deal happen. This actually brought this Nex deal. The Nexio project was a spin-off from the same developer who brought in Nexio. I think they did a great job with their building. It looks very nice. It's very classy. This is a little bit more about commercial development. This is McVickers. It's taken them a while to get these started, but I'm really happy about that AT&amp;T store, because they were wonderful, and all the employees live in Montgomery. I can't tell you, 20 years I was with Sprint, and I hated them the whole 20 years, so AT&amp;T is awesome. This one was a little complicated. It took quite a long time to get off the ground, but I think it's very, very pretty. I think a lot of people enjoy the new restaurant, and it serves a market, and the food is good. So I'm happy. I think it's really helped that corner, and I think there's plenty more to come. Sorry, I get my, when I talk, I get, I get dry. It must be, anyway. So there's U-Haul. I look forward to the parking lot being redone, but the facade improvements have come a long way. And that being said, there's a lot of people going in and out of there, which then helps stimulate the economy in Montgomery and helps all the other businesses. So that being said, this is a redevelopment project. This one has quite a lot of history. I'm not sure if everybody remembers, but there was a time a window manufacturer was going to go in there. I probably had five tenants in there at one time. Even a friend of mine from Lockport was going to buy that building. It's tripled in price, and we are, it now is home to two companies that have purchased the building and are doing exceptionally well. They were supposed to give me their job count today, but I went and visited them last week, and they're so happy to be here. And again, this was another project that took all of your support, and they're never going to leave. They've been around since the '40s, and their equipment is way too large to relocate. So you talk about stability, that's really, really a great company. More commercial development. Bennys was, again, an effort that was done primarily through the village and all the trustees, who worked really hard with the press, the media, the developers, and it's always crowded, always, always crowded. And it's one of those places that people go to, so it's bringing outside dollars into the community. Another redevelopment project, this is the old bank on Douglas. Again, a lot of properties on Douglas, which is one of the top five goals, not only for the MEDC but the village. Douglas Road is huge. They're putting a lot of money in that building. Dennis need a lot of water. Hopefully, they'll be moving along soon. And here's another Douglas Road property. This is James Manfree. He did change location a few times, but the roof looks a whole lot better blue than it did red. He's going to make it a very family-oriented place. He's going to have a room. He just recently did a presentation at the county, and he's going to have a room for kids as well, so I think that's important. Celebrations. I'm surprised we didn't have a lot more celebrations. We have a lot of celebrations still pending. We haven't done ribbon cuttings for everyone, but Rich and I will work on that and see what's going on as far as Niners and Pig Dog Pub, and there's a few of them. So sometimes, they like to get the kinks out. As you can tell, that, I think, the Chiquita one was in July. It was hot.
Yeah.
And they were open in November, but what a party. That was a great party. And then, of course, United Sugar. That was a three-day event, which was just unbelievable. Great, great event. Doc and I stayed for a long time. We met all the investors and people from, and Teresa too, South Dakota and Minnesota. It was really a nice event, until it rained. So, and I'm glad that most of you were able to attend that event. So what's up for 2017? I think there's going to be, there's still more activity. There's a couple of people looking for anywhere from 5 to 15 acres in the park. Also, on the commercial side, you know, David's got the steel up for the Dunkin' Donuts, and I believe, you know, hopefully, we can get a few more tenants, so he could start the second building. I do believe that the TIF will continue to grow in a positive way. I actually didn't look at any of my notes. So a special thank you to everybody. I couldn't do my job without all of you. Our partners, the board, the members, the media is crucial to what we do as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shar. Questions?
Do you have an opening date for Fuller's Car Wash?
I do not.
People are asking about that. They're excited, yeah.
I do not.
We do, end of March. That's what they've told several of my officers.
They look like they're ready to go.
So one issue that's really come to the forefront in the last couple of weeks has been the potential CAT closing, which is not quite in Montgomery or in Aurora or Oswego. But that's something I think that village staff and hopefully, the MEDC can kind of wrap our heads around. I met with some employees up there earlier tonight, just to chat, just to discuss what's going on. But one of my biggest concerns is, you know, what we, the county and the state, could do to get them to stay. But if that's not a possibility, what does that world look like for our area? With the, it sounds like they would have, they have many, many other consultants that kind of do work at that building, whether it's the cafeteria, security, welders, plow, HVAC maintenance, who are probably all businesses within our area that would be impacted and maybe, maybe do a great deal. So that's something that hopefully, in the next few months, we'll get some clarity from CAT, and then, and then we can kind of focus on maybe what's the impact of this to our community. So it's Hate to end on a negative note, but...
To look on the bright side, man. I asked them if they were interested in leasing or selling their land, and they said absolutely not. They were not going to leave the area for a very long time. So hopefully, you know, it's not going to be the end of the world. And the one thing that I keep remembering is when I started, the count at Caterpillar was 1,200. And I think it was a month or two later, and it was like, the headlines read 388 jobs lost. And six months later, Chris, who was on our board from Caterpillar, told us that the job count was at 22. So we're, we're not worse off than we were eight years ago. I'm not saying it's perfect, because hopefully, there'll be other opportunities that could go in those buildings. But I do know that there are people in the community, Lakin is one of them, and even United Sugar took a bunch of people from another firm that was laid off. There are needs in the community and a lot of jobs, and people don't necessarily want to move to Decatur, so I only know a few employees that actually have been asked. But again, we were told that this might not happen, or it might, it might phase, so it might take three years to phase. So hopefully, we'll create enough new jobs or, you know, I, I don't know what to say. I don't know how to control that. But I, I want people to know that, you know, seven, eight years ago, they were only at 1,200 employees. They're still at 2,000 right now. If we lose 800, we're back to 1,200. Now, how that will affect other people, one of the things that Pete had brought up at a meeting was to talk to some of the clients and the businesses in Montgomery, which I started to do. And Lakin said they hadn't had any, any business from Caterpillar in over 20 years. So I think slowly, I mean, I think that's definitely a great concern, is to be concerned about the other businesses in the region, and hopefully, help them if they need more work. Otherwise, you've done everything that you could to reach out, and if there's anything that you would like us to do, we would be happy to do it.
I just say thank you, Shar. Thank you for the presentation and all that you're doing in partnering with Rich and Community Development. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to the consent. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of January 9th, executive session minutes of December 12th, accounts payable through January 19th, and accounts receivable report for December of 2016.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And trustee Lee?
Yes.
Mike carries 5-0. Thank you. We have no items for separate action. We have one item for discussion, Family Pantry liquor license request, and I'll turn it over to the chief
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Kamal Katum. Kamal is the owner of Family Pantry at 1335 Unit G at the corner of Montgomery and Douglas. He is interested in a liquor license, either, well, most likely Class I, beer and wine only. So with that, I would like to turn the mic over to Kamal, and he can talk about his business plan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kamal Katum. I'm the owner of Family Pantry in Montgomery. I'm here today because I'm interested in getting a beer and wine license Class I, hoping that the Village of Montgomery will grant me that. I opened this convenience store, hoping I will do good. But unfortunately, it's not, because the fact I discovered there that there is too much competition around me, like Family Dollar, Dollar General, and the gas station, even though our prices are very competitive and cheaper in a lot of items than theirs. So I'm hoping to get this license to separate the same offerings of my business from the others. At the same time, I don't want to turn it into a full liquor store, but to have beer and wine to attract customers into my business, because I'm sure that this is a big factor. is a big factor as to why my business is not picking up, or at least is not doing well so far. For example, comparing apple to apple, when the previous owner was there, if we look at the foot traffic versus me right now, there is nowhere near being compared, even though there is the same location, same size, and even much cleaner and organized. Because I took many steps before I opened this business, such as remodeling the store, making it look like a real convenience store. I fixed coolers, freezers by installing a new compressors for them. And adding LED lights on the windows to make the store very noticeable from afar distance for people driving all the way off Douglas Road. I also installed a security system and fire alarm system that is up to code, which was required by the Montgomery Fire Department. And both systems are monitored by ADS, one of the highly recommended security companies around the area. I also installed a camera system to record any irregular act inside or outside the business. And I could see, God bless, that these steps were good so far, because we have never been robbed or broken into. And if you would like to visit my store, you are more than welcome to do so, to see everything that I did to improve the business. Furthermore, to try improving the business, we advertised our store on social media. And we passed out flyers to the residents. I also got the WIC license to serve mothers in town by making it convenient for them to get everything they need for their babies. And we also accept Link to be at the best convenience to the community. In addition, we have the lottery to try bringing customers. And what would be surprising to me is if they buy something besides lottery tickets. I am trying all possible ways to improve my business, but there are no signs of improvement yet. Recently, I tried to go a farther step to improve my business by getting a branded food service by the name of Crispy Crunchy Chicken. But the sales rep for the company refused to give me an approval for that, because their approval is based on sales and foot traffic to the business. But they don't see that in my store. To add on, other companies stopped delivering to us, like Free to Lay, Little Debbie, and Bimbo. So from all what I mentioned, I'm trying to say, if I'm granted a beer and wine license, that will for sure attract more customers to my business. And that will lead them to buy some other merchandise. And I'm saying that from my experience of more than 17 years in this business. So this will definitely increase my sales. That will benefit both the city and I. Because with any increase in sales, the city will receive more revenue, and I will be able to make a profit. Finally, this is a family-owned business that provides for my family and I. And the most important is for my two children going to college. And he is one of them, is my son Riyadh. And the third one will be going soon. I'm not trying here to be emotional, but this is the fact. And I know for sure, the city, they would like to see more businesses open up rather than to close down. Because as I was notice and looking at the screen, celebrations for 2016, I wish that I will be successful in 2017. But this is the only career that I know. And I don't have my masters to do another job in life. My family and I work seven days from morning till evening to cover the expenses for the store. And to pay the rent at the end of the month to the landlord. So granting me this license not only will help my business grow, but will also grant my children an education. And will give my family and me a big relief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know you spoke with the chief earlier today, kind of about the recent history for the area. The gas station gentleman was at our meetings, I think our last meeting, where we denied his liquor license request for, you know, for some concerns we had. The one question that I had for you is, when you opened up this store, was the landlord upfront with you that there had previously been a liquor license at this location, that they moved to a new location? And we were very upfront with them at the time, that we wouldn't be issuing another license for this building?
Actually, the landlord didn't address it. I knew that, because at the same time, I own the chicken coop next to two doors.
Okay.
And I've been there for three years.
Okay.
Is the landlord the one that's farther down, the pantry farther down, by the old Aldi store? Is he your landlord?
No, actually, the landlord, his name is Chris. Yeah.
Okay.
Comments from the board?
I don't see how we could possibly consider it, that we've previously turned down, I believe, two other folks for the same location. And then we just turned down the gas station for this same area, based on the same reasoning that we've had. So I don't see, I mean, how a meeting ago, we could say no and then turn around and say yes to somebody else. That area is pretty heavy with liquor license.
And that's a comment that we've made very publicly along Douglas Road for the last four years. We've got, we've probably had five to 10 different requests for different types of liquor licenses in that area. You know, we certainly don't like to pick winners and losers in this, but I feel like, and I haven't done the count, there are many options to purchase beer and wine in that area. It just feels saturated at this point. You know, and I know that we've had some issues in the area as well, right at the Douglas Montgomery Road area. So that's one of, that's our concerns at this time. But if anybody else has anything to add on it?
I think the biggest thing is, we turned down that particular location. And less than a year ago, wasn't it? Or a year ago, around there? And it's...
How long have you been in that location?
Since August.
Okay. So, yeah. And we told the owner of the building, when the pantry moved, that we wouldn't be considering a liquor license for that location, based on the fact that we allowed it to move. So I don't know how we could go back on that.
I just wish that the landlord would be a little bit more upfront about that. But at the same time, if I was you, I would still come here and ask, because you don't know. The thoughts of the board might change, you know, in the future. I guess that's one sense of hope, is that this board may, things might change. You know, previously, we've had some, like Aldi had a liquor license, and they closed. And so that kind of changes the dynamic in the area. But when we issued, when Home Pantry moved to where they are, Randall Liquors closed. You know, they came to the meeting and said that we will probably close if you move a liquor store too close to us. And they closed up shop, and they're gone. So while we don't want to pick winners and losers, and, you know, at the same time, if we issued this to you, it might sink another one of the businesses in that area. So it's, yeah, it's difficult. We get these questions quite frequently, actually, so...
I agree with everything Trustee Marisak said. So I would vote no.
Yeah, that's, I'm looking for directions. So is that the majority then, at this time?
Yeah, I'm not hearing anybody supportive of it this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Anything new or unfinished?
I actually have two quick items that are Rotary-related. There is a box outside here in the hallway. We also have a collection box over at the police department. We are doing a supply drive for mutual ground, and that is going through January 31st. And then also, this Thursday evening, we are doing tours of the police department from 5:30 to 6:30. And then from 6:30 to 8:30, we are hosting a game night that is open to the public. Yes?
Supply drive, as in examples of supplies?
The majority of the items on their wish list would be cleaning supplies, various cleaning supplies, or things like cutlery, toilet paper. There is a list attached to each box.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You said mutual ground, right?
Yes, correct, mutual ground. And they assist victims of domestic violence.
Good. Future meetings, Plan Commission Meeting February 2nd. And then our next Village Board Meeting is Monday, February 13th at 7:00 PM. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into Executive Session to discuss the employment of an employee.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
And Trustee Lee?
Yes.